I wonder how they make these things. Once in a while, I crave these things.
Oh, yeah?
No, I shouldn't eat them. They're not good for you.
Uh huh.
But they use cornmeal and then they somehow blow them up.
Always a little bit too much for me. All too messy.
They're messy. That's why I only eat them at home. Just like corn on the cob. You know, we were at a festival Sunday and they were selling corn on the cob. I said, no, that's only a...
Mm hmm.
It's too messy.
Is that time?
All right. Well, the time is six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty five. And before we get started, I did want to just express my gratitude to staff and to the volunteers and committees for, I think, a pretty successful art fest. I think everybody had a very positive experience based on the feedback we received, and it was very well run and organized. Really thank Caitlin for taking a lead from the staff point of view of organizing it. I think beautiful weather, just great time and a lot of smiling faces and giant Armadillo bike, I think, was the other takeaway, which was just amazing construct that was out there. So really appreciate that. And I'm sure we'll get a lot more details as we get more survey responses as well as a report from Arts Commission. With that, I'll go ahead and move on to public comments. If there's anybody that wishes to speak at this time, please step up to the podium to address council. Okay, we'll move on to staff reports, beginning with the administration report tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Something that's not in the written report that I just wanted to let you all know that staff is monitoring is, of course, the Texas Legislature. You know, there are some potentially scary bills, but, you know, it's if we wrote up a report and then the bills don't end up passing, you know, then we've all panicked for no reason. But just know that Jerry and I are monitoring the ledge through both TML and then the American Planning Association. But we do plan to have a written report in June because as we're inching closer to the end of the ledge, that's when, you know, all the action happens. So be expecting that report in June. So GovBuild, we plan to launch on May thirtieth. They're doing the final. We've cleared the watershed development permit, the zoning permit. They're making the final changes on the building permit, and we've got to do some more testing on that. But we are planned to launch May thirtieth. Originally, we had May fifteenth, but we needed to fine tune the building permit application and fee schedule. Further refinement of that, and so the launch date is now May thirtieth. The HR management consultant, I have received three proposals that I'm currently reviewing, and I plan to bring that back as an agenda item on May twentieth. And then I'll come back to Placer AI in a moment. Some upcoming events for the month of May. We have a Birds of Prey presentation. I believe that's a P and E sponsored event happening this Saturday at nine thirty AM here at City Hall. Next Tuesday, this did not make it on my report, but there's a wildfire interactive presentation. The Austin Fire Department, the wildfire division is coming here at City Hall. That'll be next Tuesday at six PM. And then the Saturday after next will be the Trail Safety Adventure Day, and I will let Officer Brownlow talk about that during the public safety report. That will be ten AM to noon over at the Uplands. Upcoming meetings, I just wanted to highlight, Council, we have a joint work session with Budget and Finance next Thursday from six to seven PM. It'll pretty much be a repeat of the presentation that I will be giving you all later tonight, and you can give any, the mayor and council, you can give any direction to the Budget Finance Committee on your, you know, priorities as we move into the budget process for FY twenty six. So upcoming agenda items, the Upland Schematic Design is coming back June third. Committee restructuring, we will have a draft of the proposed changes on May twentieth and a discussion item with, you know, final input from council. And then by June third, all of the committees will have had a chance to review everything. Zoning is talking about the proposed planning and zoning idea tomorrow at their meeting. So we'll bring back, hopefully, like I said, the draft on May twentieth, and hopefully we'll be ready to adopt on June third to make those changes. So now I will. Well, any questions before I move on to Placer AI? The fire is next Tuesday, May thirteenth here at six PM. Oh, sorry, EOC. Apologies. Too bright.
Councilor Tessa?
So I just have one kind of slight comment for the CD committee transition.
Yes.
There's just a few, like less than a handful of things that the community organizes that doesn't seem to be from like any group, but I love them. And I know the residents that do it are getting a little older. And just when everyone goes to meet there, just like if it is not a committee led thing to also just like note it down and be like, this is a really cool thing that the community does that we just need like a group to pick up. I'm specifically thinking about the, you know, buy the officer's lunch thing, which just seems to be, I think that's Sandy.
Sandy Book.
What's her last name? Sorry, it's Arts.
Sandy Williams.
Yeah. And so like anything that just kind of comes from just like the goodness of people that like what we will try to remember to like continue to do, but it just seems to be like a one small group. Can we just kind of?
So the team, we haven't settled, they haven't settled on the name yet. I don't know if it's going to be called a team, a working group, but they're going to be focused mostly on events. So that's, you know, that's really not in the realm of events, but, I mean, they could maybe expand it to, you know, programs and events. But we're also really talking about city, you know, like city sponsored that where it's tied to a budget, right? And I don't think that what you're speaking of necessarily is tied to a budgetary item.
Okay. I know it seems a little silly to say like, we've got to remember to do these like cool things or like just.
Yeah.
Remember to be good people.
Yeah.
Just like, you know, actually take part in kind of like giving back. But I don't know. I just, when we got that on our door, I was just like, oh, man, I love these things. And just sometimes you could feel them just kind of getting out of touch a little bit. Anyway.
Okay, so I'm gonna just, I've pulled up, I haven't quite figured out how the quarterly reports are going to look yet, but I thought we'd just take a look at the software live. So I'm just gonna bring up screens here. So this is actually a fairly new feature. It's called markets. So they created a market since we're so small. They created a market for our city. So they, you can see here, they've got the whole city limits. They've excluded the ETJ. And so there's kind of an overview. We'll talk about that briefly. So this again is quarter one of twenty twenty five, and when it's comparing, it's comparing to one year ago, so quarter one of twenty twenty four. So our resident population, according to this, is five forty-three employees, meaning number of people that work within the marketplace is three thousand. Out of market visitors, so this, these are number of people that visit the market, so that visit Sunset Valley but do not live or work in it. Those who pass through the market but do not stop for at least ten minutes are excluded. So they're not, you know, someone driving by on Highway two ninety, just driving through the city and their, you know, their cellphone, you know, it's calculated. That's, they're not going to be counted because they haven't been here for longer than ten minutes. But anyways, we've had almost a million visitors in quarter one, which was up four and a half percent from last year. And it's estimating our daytime workplace is one point six thousand. So again, you know, we have a small population, but because of the people that work and travel and visit and shop here, we have a much, much higher daytime population. So we're really interested in the visitors. So because the visitors are obviously the folks shopping at the shopping centers. So this is just, again, some more data. So we already looked at the out of market visitors, but visits, so the number of unique daily visits, so two point four million. So that's up six, again, this is for quarter one, January, February, March of twenty twenty five. We're up six point seven percent from quarter one of twenty twenty four. And so the average, you know, the average visitor is spending just over an hour in Sunset Valley. And visits trends, so you can see here, just this is like the whole quarter. You can see where visits are up and visits are down. Tuesday, January twenty first, for some reason, was very low, but then, you know, it goes up and down. Visit variances. This is very interesting. It's like, where are people coming from to Sunset Valley? Obviously, you know, the immediate zip code surrounding us, but then it goes all the way out, you know, towards dripping. Visitor demographics, so it has household income, ethnicity, education, number of persons per household, and it compares it to just the Texas average. Visitor top places, so Sunset Valley Village took first place, followed by Homestead, followed by the Home Depot, and Raising Cane's is number four. So, yeah, sometimes it will call out individual stores, and then sometimes it will call out shopping centers as a whole. Most people, you know, only spend ten to thirty minutes, but then thirty to sixty minutes. And it shows you too where people are coming from and where they're going to. So a lot of people are coming to Sunset Valley from home, and a lot of people leave Sunset Valley and go home. Again, travel by distance. So it just kind of offers a demographic snapshot of how many people are coming to Sunset Valley. So I think it will be helpful. I'm still working with Placer because what I've asked is, you know, how can I use this data to possibly predict? You know, it's great that we have the data that, you know, shows the historicals and, you know, we can kind of correlate it to, okay, well, our shopping centers are full and our sales taxes have increased. So and this is showing that we have more visitors now, so that's good. Shopping is up, but how can we use this data to, you know, for forecasting? And so they were going to get back to me on that. There is this report called Retail Leakage, and I also have a follow up training session with them on what, you know, what that report, because I asked, I said, what is retail leakage? I'd love to know more about that. So I have a follow up training session with them on that. Another feature is with Placer is you can create traffic pins. So I created a traffic pin at Brody Lane and Home Depot Boulevard. And I think this would be great for Public Works is there, you know, if they're considering doing a roadway project or any sort of like, you know, roadway improvements. So it gives you impressions and then viewers. And what impressions are, well, it has a little metrics. Okay, so impressions are the extrapolated number of passerby activity around the traffic pin, and viewers are the estimated number of unique passerbys that potentially viewed or interacted with the traffic pin. So in the last full twelve months, ten point five million, there have been ten point five million impressions in the Brody, Brody Lane, Home Depot Boulevard intersection. And one point five million people have at least, you know, crossed through there at least one time. So it's a very, very, you know, heavily trafficked area. I was, I was quite surprised by that ten point five million number. And there's been a seven point two percent increase year over year. You can see here, this is again going back daily, the impressions trend. So you're like, why is this so low? Well, that's Thursday, November twenty eighth with Thanksgiving. So that's why that's low. And then Wednesday, December twenty, Christmas. So you had a drop off. You could look at this and say, you know, what month is the busiest or the least busiest month at Brody and Home Depot? And according to this, it was February, actually, was the least busiest month. So, you know, potentially you could look at, maybe that's when we schedule a roadway improvement project. And then I was kind of surprised by this too, the daily, there's really not much change. Obviously, let's see, Friday and Saturday are the busiest days, with Sunday being the least busiest day, but there's not a lot of variance in that. So there's just a lot of data here based on, and then, you know, where are people coming from? So that's another tool that you can do. You can, we can make as many traffic pins as we want throughout the city and then use that to extrapolate data. Any questions so far before I move on? Yes?
I'm Councilor Rose Garden, and then we're good. Councilor Radikis.
So how do we access this? Is there a link where we'll be able to go and kind of study this or?
We think we have, so far Caitlin and I are the only ones with, with logins. And I know we were going to give Carolyn a login as well. So I don't know how many logins we can, we can have with our, maybe we can have unlimited logins. I'd have to, I'd have to talk to Placer about that because they have to create the logins.
Okay, yeah, because it would be nice to be able to take time and really look at it and study the data. And I just had one question on the joint meeting with finance.
Yeah.
Is that joint council and finance?
Joint council and finance. It'll be in the conference room.
Okay, and that's next Thursday?
Correct. Next Thursday, the sixteenth. Oh, sorry, excuse me, fifteenth, right?
At six o'clock?
Similar to what we've done in the year, in past years, we'll have an hour to meet with Budget Finance before they go into their meeting. We'll be presenting or discussing the budget, caring for the slides that we'll talk about tonight with changes as we incorporate them from our discussion and my discussions with staff. And what we want to do is obviously kick off that budget process for them as we've done in the years past.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Rose.
Yeah. Yeah, they said when it's, when it's a road like this to try to put the pin, you know, in the very center, right, to get, to capture as many impressions as possible. But really, I think what we would want to use this data for, you know, it would be different if we were, if we were a business, right? Yeah, we'd want to know, you know, where are people coming from and, you know, maybe potentially where to put like a sign or something like that. But since we're interested, this is more on the civic side of things, I think we're just trying to get like, you know, how busy is the road? What time of day is, you know, is it the busiest? What month, you know, week, things like that? And, you know, how many people are traveling on it? The one thing that I asked, you know, can we, does it disseminate between, you know, is it a vehicle, pedestrian or bicyclist? And they said, no, unfortunately, it's not, they can't get that, they can't get that specific. So unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, and are these, are these just purely based on cell phones or are they extrapolating like an, like an average number of passengers or anything like that?
Yeah, it's just based on, yeah, so it doesn't say like how many people are in the car, it's just like how many impressions. So they extrapolated this data from, from two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven, six hundred thousand actual cell phones. That's, that was like the, and then they extrapolate the data from.
Got it.
That many cell phones. So, yeah, it doesn't tell you like, yeah.
Councilor Tessa?
As for how many people from the meadows kind of poll you, I, we could ask them just to say like, how many persons less residents? Because they'll know that you have just like been there, but I doubt it'll move the number very much. The, when you said it would be good to kind of forecast, because, you know, we're two months behind on our sale, and I was talking to Carolyn and Kyle just about like ships coming into like Los Angeles right now are like half full.
Yeah.
And those are the ones that have, that weren't canceled altogether. So it's, it'll be interesting to start seeing what we can.
Tax numbers too.
Yeah. The, the dip in late January, it's kind of funny, the, like the third week, third to fourth week in January is usually has the most, what's called the most depressing day of the year. And I know this because the first time they calculated it, it was my birthday, which is January twenty fourth. It's all good. This is also kind of some related, so straight music, they tore down, and it's going to be a three hundred unit apartment building, which, I mean, that is like one of the closest. And those people are going to come over here as well, so.
I think one feature that we talked about a little bit, but I think would be interesting to see is trail usage, right?
Yeah.
And just trying to like get a sense of like how many visitors are coming, what time of day, when there maybe needs to be extra attention paid to trails just for safety, but also just, you know, utilization and where they're coming from. Because when I was doing that tour with Officer Brownlow, going back into the back area, I was, one of the most striking things I had was people are coming from the apartment complexes directly into our trail system, whereas, you know, I always thought there are entry points were, you know, a little bit more closer to like City Hall and Lone Oak. But, yeah, I think that'd be a really useful aspect of this tool as well.
We can create as many, they're called POIs, Points of Interest, as we want. So I've already, I know Caitlin, she'll be, she did one for, she called it Art Fest Area. So it includes like, you know, the, all the, the four parking lots we rent plus the Uplands. So she'll be extrapolating data for Art Fest. I created one City Hall backyard. I still need to create one for Savannah Trail. But this is, so this is the area of the City Hall backyard. So, you know, I kind of drew it. It incorporates, you know, the parking circle here and then the trail going backwards or going further back. So in the last twelve months, there's been, you know, five point three thousand visits with one point six thousand visitors. So there's one point six thousand people have, in the last year, have, you know, walked, walked, done something in the City, City Hall backyard. Maybe they were going to the community garden, maybe they were, you know, going to walk the trails. For whatever reason, a huge increase in, huge increase. And then, you know, visit trends. So Saturday is the most popular day, followed by Sunday and Monday, Friday being the least popular, popular day. So you can see what time of day people are coming and how long are they staying? Of course, that's how long are they staying in that, you know, in that area? So. And then, you know, where are they coming from again? So it's similar data on, but, but what we'll want to do is we'll want to create these POIs for additional, you know, parks and green spaces. And, you know, once we do finally officially open the trail, then a year from, you know, a year, six months, and then a year, we can see, okay, what's the activity been, you know, since we've opened? So we'll do the same thing with City Hall backyard. Once the, once all of the upgrades are complete, then, you know, six months, we can see how has usage been. A year from now, how has usage, usage been?
I think another interesting project would be kind of related to the sales taxes, going back and comparing like the last twelve months of data from Placer against what our actuals were for that same time period and see if there's a strong correlation, which there should be. But, you know, I'm just kind of curious like what that correlation is, how strong it is, you know, so that we can better use it for forecasting potentially. So, you know, does it match our percent increases over month to month, et cetera? Do we see the same dips? So that would be interesting as well. But, yeah, no, I think this is a, it's a very powerful tool, something that, you know, as we get more familiar with it, what purposes we can utilize it for, and we can certainly look to see if, you know, what number of seats we have and potentially adding more for certain groups to be able to access it for their, for their own experiences. I know, just talking to some of the businesses, a lot of businesses use this tool, and they're obviously focused on customer demographics, where, where they're going to, where they can do targeted advertising. And so having this as a resource of the city is, I think, it's, it's just, it's very interesting and helps us with our analysis and virtual forecasting. Anything else, Matt, that you wanted to highlight here?
No, and, yeah, I will probably, I'll, it'll probably be mostly tailored on the visitors' report that I'll report quarterly on. But, yeah, as I, you know, learn more about the, and how to use it and how to utilize it, like forecasting, you know, I'll include that, you know, those, those reports when necessary. And then, of course, we'll report time to time on, you know, trail usage, park usage and things like that.
And as a reminder, what is the, the annual fee that we pay for it?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand. So it's a relatively small amount, but again, Eight thousand, so it's a relatively small amount, but again, it's something that if we find, we want to find utility for it to keep, you know, having that cost be justified. But it's not a super expensive license in terms of.
We decided to go ahead and split it, half, half general fund, half hot fund. Because it, I mean, we're using this data for events and promotions, so. Take the burden a little bit off the general fund.
All right, any other questions for Placer?
We had another good, well, sales tax is still good, but we'll talk about sales tax more in the budget presentation.
All right, so moving on to the Public Works reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this past month, we've been really focused on obviously setting up for adventure build and the Arts Fest and helping any way we can with that, as well as catching up on a few items and such as some mowing and things of that nature out in the green spaces. We are in the process of, we'll be hitting the, since the rain is done for this week, we'll be hitting and going back and working on the City Hall backyard. So you'll see a lot of movement out there over the next few months as we hope to have that done. I know, talking to Chief Carter, he'd really like to host National Night Out like, out there in October, so that's one of our goals. So in the upcoming weeks, you'll see a lot of, of the construction projects kind of wrapping up around the city. That includes the Brody Waterline, hopefully the Country White Waterline, uh, project, as well as the work that's happening on Ernest Robles Way. I know there have been some questions regarding the raised crosswalks on Ernest Robles Way. And those are, there's a couple of things with that, though. So those are, um, one, they're for pedestrian safety. They've been shown to increase visibility of pedestrians. And it places the pedestrian at the same level as the sidewalk. So the sidewalk is at the same, and the raised crosswalk are at the same level. And two, they also are traffic calming devices. You also see them, they, they can be also called speed tables. They help to reduce the speed of traffic. And so we are in the process, hopefully, the, the, the rain may have delayed it a little bit, but we're getting signs that should be installed hopefully this week on Ernest Robles Way to kind of say, hey, raised crosswalk ahead, you know, so people can pay attention to that. And then, um, a few weeks, once the other side of the road is done, we will be doing all the markings, which includes, I believe, the, uh, crosswalks on top will be the shadowed. So they'll be very visible and we may be adding a little bit more to the chevrons that lead up to it. So those crosswalks will be a little bit more visible. And before, you know, before we put those in, I would say there is, I'd always hear some complaints about speeding on Ernest Robles Way. People would just kind of take off through there. And they will help to reduce that speed and increase pedestrian safety in those areas. And I know some people are always going to be against any kind of traffic calming device because they just want to go fast, they want to get to where they're going. But from a pedestrian and bike and everything perspective, they are a much safer, safer option. They will, will increase pedestrian safety in those areas. So those are the things we're working on, um, in this month. And if I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has, um, related to the report.
Yeah, and just to, I think it'll be a discussion probably from some council members on the raised crosswalks. If not, then I'll, I'll, I'll start out, but, um, so, uh, you know, one of the things that, as a resident of the, um, the villas, that we see frequently is speeding on Ernest Robles Way. And that's been a concern ever since we moved in there and just the safety of the intersection. So I certainly want to make sure that we're, um, taking the measures to reduce speed that we can. And I think these tables are a good thing for that.
Okay.
I do have some concerns about the visibility at night and how we can make sure that cars are aware that these tables are there. And if there's any kind of like reflective surface that we can, you know, or paint that we can use, that would highlight that. Because it, even in the daytime, there are certain shaded areas where it makes it a little hard to see until, um, your drivers see it. But, you know, the signage, the, uh, the patterns, um, you know, obviously people, utilization, just knowing that they're there is going to increase over time. But I do worry about it at night, you know, when, when cars are, you know, going to be traveling, that they have to have enough warning and visibility. But, you know, in general, I think that, um, from my perspective, the safety is, is a big concern and always has been. And making sure that, that we have the visibility for cross, crossing at those points. And especially as we're going to be connecting Savannah Trail to the rest of our trail system, we want to make sure that that is a safe crossing as well for residents. And I, my understanding is that we can't really do much to change the speed limits on the streets. You know, that that's something that we don't have the ability to reduce any further. And so this becomes a, you know, the, the traffic calming is, is a method for doing that, so. But, um, I'll open it up for council feedback and maybe ask any other, any other thoughts or comments. Councilor Johnson?
There's been residents that will tell me that it's like, oh, the speed, speed bumps on Ernest Robles, you, you really got to, you really got to slow down to go over them. And I just smile and say, yeah. There you go. But, uh, and then they don't continue it any further. I'm excited to maybe get one of these on Jones next. Because, I mean, that was thirty-five through there, and if they can have them there and we can have one. And we have a lot of people that cross going to the school, so.
Well, when I was a kid, Jones Road was a straight road and people would fly down that road. And that's when I think this all, that's in front of City Hall went in to try to slow it down somewhat throughout that space. Because it was, it was, it was, it was, it was a speed zone through there.
I wonder if it, it, it's almost a quarter mile, I think, from, from the, from Pillow to the light. And I thi, I think they treat it like a quarter mile when they see the green light. So I think right there at north, north, uh, Sunset Trail, I mean, if we put one in, I've, I've already said, I'm going to get like a, a six pack and a chair and put it in Mrs. Lucas's front yard. Because like that will be, that'll be some killer viewing, but, um, I, I really like them. They are currently like, even during the day shaded, there's like, especially the, the one that is farther south, and so you can hit it, but.
Yeah, and I think once we, because right now the crosswalk portion is not painted, so it's not as obvious. Um, I think once that goes in, and like I said, it should have the shadow, the, the dark with the, with the light because it is a concrete road. So I think that will make it pop quite a bit more out.
No, I love them both, though.
Yeah, and I, I think just going back a little bit, we've tried multiple solutions there over the years. And, you know, going all the way to having, you know, flashing lights, you know, going, um, in both directions, which don't seem to slow down cars, you know, even when they, even when they're working, you know, and, and kind of, you know, flag signaling. So, again, you know, I, I think it's, it's been an improvement or will be an improvement, especially, um, you know, if we want to have more traffic going across the roads as, as access trails. But I want to make sure that we are being, uh, acknowledging and being safe for the cars that are traveling there so that their awareness is such that they're not caught off guard. Because as, when they were first installed, you know, we, we would see sparks flying. Any other questions for Public Works? Councilor Metticus?
I don't have a question, but I, again, I want to thank Public Works and PD and the admin staff and everybody who volunteered and worked Art Fest. It just was, I think, our best event yet. And, um, I want to thank Officer Brownlow for the drone photos, they were great. So it was really everybody coming together, it was, it was quite an event, so. And the weather cooperated, which was really great, so thanks, everybody.
Yeah, I loved all the improvements that we had this year, especially the pre-set up tents, which made things a lot easier. Those picnic tables and the umbrellas were really, really nice and they, they created a splash of color. So it continues to improve, you know, every year. One other, I thought of one other thing, so the, the street signage, you know, is that, what's the, the next steps in regards to having the additional plates put on?
So we have the, um, quote back, it's about a little less than six thousand dollars to put the signs on the back. We can go ahead and move forward with that. We have funding in the street, in the street department budget, we can go ahead and do that. I am asking them to go ahead and give me the pricing also for replacing the signs on, uh, the traffic lights at like Brody and Ernest Robles Way and putting those branded signs up on those like locations. So we'll probably do that all in one go.
Obviously, we talked about whether they can give us like a better sort of visualization of what it would look like, like maybe more of a three D image that. That'd be great, I think, before we decide that we're going to move forward with it. We can, we can get any feedback from council on the appearance. Anything else for Public Works? All right, moving on to public safety.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, Officer Brownlow sitting in for Chief Carter. We're still monitoring camps in the area currently within our city limits. There are no illegal camps. However, there is one camp that's fairly large in the city of Austin, kind of proximal to the Violet Crown Trail between Ben Garza and Home Depot Boulevard. We notified City of Austin, they put it on their to-do list to get a homeless outreach, um, group out there. And also, um, Parks Department is also aware of that camp. Pretty close to the, the creek and there's a lot of trash there, so it is a concern. We have had some crime from that camp into our city, so it's also a concern for us. Of course, we keep monitoring for campfires and stuff like that. Graduation traffic, so May twenty-ninth through Burger Stadium is going to have AISD's graduations. This year, they're doing a little bit different, they're going to have five hours in between graduations. So that will get all the vehicles out and new vehicles in, so hopefully it's not a big jam up. We're going to be monitoring the Old Town area and the streets. I think we're going to put some cones out with no parking, just temporarily to limit folks from parking in Old Town, specifically Lone Oak and Pillow. If you guys see anything, any kind of issues, please let us know. Trail Adventure Day is coming up, the seventeenth, on Saturday, right during the farmer's market, it's going to be in the uplands. Uh, we're going to be utilizing What Three Words app to locate, um, kind of a scavenger hunt in the, in the uplands area. It's going to showcase the uplands, it's going to show people that we have a trail there. And also showcase our trail system here in Sunset Valley, as well as other things. If you complete the course, you get a prize. And What Three Words is a really awesome app that Travis County Dispatch, City of Austin Dispatch uses to help locate individuals. If you have it, you can use it to, instead of using the, the full numbers of lat, latitude and longitude, you can just put in what three words that are, you know, within basically a parking space and locate somebody that you're looking for or somebody in a, in a fairgrounds. Or if you're lost, you can send that to dispatch if they don't already have it from when you called nine-one-one essentially. And so we're trying to get the word out, um, our department already uses it. If there's somebody that's lost or maybe there's a, a crime in progress and they have a cell phone linked to it, they send that out to our computers. And then we use our phones to try to locate that person a little bit easier. So it's a great app and it's worldwide. And so we're showcasing that, showcasing the, the uplands, our, um, our conservation area and, and getting people interested on the trails, so, thank you.
Just in terms of, um, who we're reaching out to for inviting to that, are we going with, to the elementary school and also trying to engage with them to say, come out?
Yes, so we've delivered a stack to the elementary school. Our citizens, I think, have postcards that were maybe sent out or delivered, I'm not sure if they've, they've gone out just yet. And, um, social media and on our website as well.
Right. Right, any questions for public safety? Councilor Rose Garden?
How fast are encampments cleaned up?
I'm sorry?
How fast are encampments cleaned up?
It depends, if it's within Sunset Valley, very fast. We partner with Public Works, we try to do the outreach thing at first and give folks time to clean up, um, their stuff and try to get them linked in with Sunrise Church or, or another entity. And then Public Works comes in and tries to get the area back to its natural state. If it's in the city of Austin, then it's a good amount of time. So we, we kind of, in regards to this camp in City of Austin, um, we kind of give them a little bit more information of how it can affect our city, especially it being twenty feet from, uh, the creek and how there's just a ton of trash that can easily go into the creek, especially during a flooding event, and really just kind of wreck things, so. So when we tell them that kind of stuff, they, they put it a little bit higher on their list.
Watershed protection.
Waters, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also just like highlighting wildfire risks, you know, when there are encampments, there can often be open flames or sources that, um, you know, we want to make sure that we're, we're very attentive to. I know that you mentioned that when we were in.
Yeah, and if we, if, we do a night flight in the, in the conservation area to check for fires. And if we see one, even if it's in the city of Austin but close to our city limits, we'll go and, and take care of that.
Any other questions for public safety? All right, thank you, staff. We're going to move on to agenda number four, which is consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilor Rose Garden?
Agenda item number five, we're going to pull and bring it back at the next meeting. So I approve on consent, agenda item number six and agenda item number seven.
So the motion is to approve on consent, item number six and seven. Are there anybody that wants to pull either of those items? Okay, we're pulling seven. All right, is there second to approve on consent, item number six?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor approving item number six, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we approved on consent, the authorizing the release of a request for qualifications for municipal court prosecutor services. And we'll go back to agenda number five now. And I think this one is the one that there's some discussion about making updates, um, that Councilor Rose Garden requested that we, we pull this one until the next meeting so we can approve a cleaner version? That's correct, okay. So I'm okay with, with that, so we can bring this item back at our next meeting and table it until we have a, uh, the new version or updated version at the May twentieth meeting. All right, so we'll move on to agenda number seven and I'll hand this over to, um, Public Works for discussion about this item.
So this is for the, um, mill and overlay of Brody Lane. It is in an amount of nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. It is to basically, um, we'll also be repairing, there's a couple dip sections on Brody that will be repaired as part of this. We had four bids for the project, Lone Star Paving came in as the low bid. There is, um, originally we had a budgeted a million dollars for this project. There was, um, whoops, jumped somewhere. There was a certain amount that was, um, allocated for the, sorry, for the engineering task order and the materials testing. And we generally also include a contingency, um, just in case anything pops up during construction that, um, we need to address and, um, repair or replace during that process. And so as that, we are asking to increase the budget by a hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars so that we can, um, um, complete this project. This is a project that will take place overnight, um, just because it'll have the least amount of impact on, um, visitors and stuff. Sunset Valley, we just saw with Placer AI, it's a very busy street. However, you can also see from Placer AI that around eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night, all of it kind of starts to die out and we'll be able to get in there and not have as much, um, stuff happening, um, that would impact traffic. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those questions.
We'll start with Mayor Protam and then Councilor Johnson, I think, wanted to also ask, or no, you didn't, okay, Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I had questions about the timing of when this would happen and how long it would take to do it. You said it could be done overnight?
It's going to be done overnight and it will be happening well after, um, Ernest Robles Way will already be open at that point.
Including, including striping, laying in the conduit, everything else?
Um, it's, I believe, well, striping may occur during the day, um, but it moves, striping moves very fast. I'd have to double check on that to make sure striping would be hap, when striping would be happening. But in the interim, they will, um, have the little, you have to actually let asphalt kind of cure for a while. And so they'll have the little tags that come in when you do that. So you'll have that happen, all that will happen overnight. And then, um, striping, like I said, it could happen during the day, but they usually are moving very fast with striping, so.
Yeah, I was just curious about the, the time. I, I think like, for example, the, and this is obviously a very different project, but the Ernest Robles project has had a real impact on, on, for example, on Manhattan Lane's business. And I want to make sure that we do this in a way that doesn't disrupt other businesses.
That's why we tried to, and, and, I mean, you do pay premium to do stuff overnight, but I think this is the best option. So, yeah, and it, I don't think it will take very long, it will be a pretty quick project. Lone Star Paving does a lot of the work for Tech Dot, and if you guys saw how fast what they did over here on two ninety, it was, it was very quick.
My other concern is, given the general economic situation and the potential for prices on things to rise up, are we locked in at this bid if we accept it? Or potentially could prices, could costs go up?
No, this should, this would be the bid. So the contingency would be for things that are outside of the scope of the bid.
Right.
So if, if there's additional fill or something we, we need to repair, that's the contingency. Now, this, this is the cost, we shouldn't have any increase in cost based on anything else. So that should be factored into the overhead for the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Anybody wish to make a motion at this point? Councilor Rosengard?
When you said overnight, you don't mean one night?
No, it'll be over a couple nights, it won't just be one night.
I move we act on award of bid to Lone Star Paving an amount not to exceed, does this one have the extra?
It's the bid, the award is for that amount, but the budget amendment includes the additional contingency amount, and so you'd be approving both things, or could make a motion to approve both things, the award and then the contingency budget, or the amendment to the budget.
Okay. God, I'm so bad at this. Let's just workshop it here. At what point would I say that I want to add the $123,000?
You can just, the inordinate amending the fiscal year '24, '25 budget, budget amendment number seven, and that then includes the amount.
All right, cool. I move we act on award of bid to Lone Star Paving an amount not to exceed $964,898 for the Brody Lane Mill and Overlay Project, and approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year '24, 2024, 2025 budget, budget amendment number seven.
Is there a second for that motion? Mayor Protam, seconds? Any further discussion? And this is coming out of Street Fund, correct, for the additional funding, right? All right, and we'll go into in our budget presentation, the current levels for each of the funds or projected levels as well. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Now, we're going to go into a discussion item only, and so this is the preliminary operating budget for this next fiscal year. And so council, working with staff, this includes department budgets, there's obviously some ongoing, you know, items that we have budgeted. There are a number of things that this budget or this draft budget does not include, which we'll highlight during the slides, but the purpose of this is, is that we really want to get your feedback on where we should be making adjustments prior to going into the budget, you know, proper. That includes, you know, concerns with regards to what we've set our revenue expectations for, you know, potential projects that are prioritized for council. You'll also see or should have seen in the presentation that as a result of two factors, one being that we've changed our reserve policy now, so that where it's 18 months, and we've also had a decrease in interest, you know, over what was projected, which is natural because we had a very high interest yield the prior year. We now have less room to work with in terms of our general fund flex budget that we can use for projects or for, you know, other things that we want to do that have come out of general fund versus some of the other funding. One of the items that we'll talk about is, right now, we have to look at addressing essentially what is a deficit for our non-committed funding, and so we'll talk about that during the slides, but we have committed funding of that million dollars, or roughly million dollars that we set aside for water conservation, and so one potential idea that council can give feedback on is whether we want to decrease that amount, given, you know, that we still would have a healthy amount there, but allowing us to continue to have non-committed funds in order to carry forward for projects. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Matt for a presentation, but again, really wanted your feedback on priorities for this next year, some of the assumptions that we've made, some of the concerns that, you know, that you have as council, so that we can take this into our next meeting on this topic, which will be the Budget and Finance meeting next week, and then going into the budget planning proper. So with that, hand it over to City Minister.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so we'll begin. We'll start off with projected ending fund balances for fiscal year 2025, so the current fiscal year that we're in that ends on September 30th. This is numbers that Kyle came up with for most of the funds that are based on, you know, estimated revenues and expenses, projecting those to the end of the year, and then Carolyn and I also worked on how much money we expect to spend on projects, project payout, like contractual payouts for the remainder of the year. So the general fund, of course, being our largest fund and our workhorse, the workhorse fund, as the mayor pointed out, and I'll go into more detail on the next slide about the general fund, but basically we expect to end the year with about 10.3 million, but as the mayor mentioned, there's a deficit in the non-committed that we need to address. The utility fund is ending quite higher, thanks to the large, we sent a million dollars instead of the minimum recommended amount of $500,000. So we're ending the utility fund projecting with 5.4 million, Street Fund, 4.5 million, hotel occupancy tax has under, just under 700,000, 1.75 million in the venue fund, that's also known as the green tax. We've drawn down quite a bit on the crime control fund, so we project to only end that fund with about $10,000. And then, again, a huge drawdown of the CIP fund because we've been completing projects, so I think Carolyn and I projected we'll have spent about $7 million total on projects when this fiscal year ends, so. Just to go into detail about the general fund, and this also is an updated presentation, I realized that the one that got posted had some errors, so I can send this present, there's also a few slides that Carolyn and I added today, so I can send this out to you all so you have the updated presentation. But essentially, a big change here in the reserve fund amount, and the reason for those change, one being, of course, the 18-month reserve that was set at the beginning of, the end of FY '24, the beginning of FY '25, so when the budget was adopted, council adopted it with, going back to the 18-month reserve. We just made that policy change a few weeks ago, after review and recommendations from Budget and Finance. So that's one reason for the big jump in the reserve amount. The other is, again, we're taking the five-year average of actual general fund revenue, so not just sales tax, but any general fund revenue. As part of the kind of reorganizing our finances with the new financial software, what we did is we reduced the number of text pool accounts in FY '24, and we basically have all the interests except for what goes to the crime control, so all the interest for all the funds goes to the main, the text pool prime account, so it's recorded to the general fund. Interest rates were very high in fiscal year '24, and the city received $1.3 million of interest revenue, which was great in FY '24. However, that caused our average to go up, meaning the reserve balance needed to go up because the, exactly, exactly. So that number will probably go down because as we've spent a lot of money and as interest rates are going down, our, you know, our overall balance is going to go down as will interest revenue. As far as committed funds, so what is in committed funds right now is $975,000, most of that being the water conservation rebate program, as you can see, not very much of that million dollars has been spent. The other is a small amount left, it was much larger at the beginning of the year, it was 30,000, around 30,000. This was the PGA donation for Burger Center Trail. Council decided to allocate that to the task order for the uplands design, since that's, you know, similar area. That, we are expecting that that money will be spent, because I think we intend to use that entire line item, correct, Carolyn? So yeah, so that money will most likely be spent. It's still, if you go back and look, there's still a deficit of this amount, and I have notes. So basically, we're going to need to, we're going to need to reduce the committed general funds by 410,486 minus the 2794, because again, we're most likely going to spend that, which means we're going to have to reduce the water conservation rebate program, because you cannot reduce restricted funds. So the LEOC funds, the opioid funds, and American Rescue Plan, those are all funds that we received, grant funds that we received that are restricted to be used for a specific purpose. So the only, and we just set the reserve fund policy at 18 months in our financial policy, so really the only way we can make up for that shortfall is reducing the water conservation rebate program, which would still leave over half a million dollars in the program, which is plenty for how much it's, you know, currently being utilized. One other thing to note is these restricted funds, so with the balance of only 40,000, the majority of that being the American Rescue Plan, we actually have those funds allocated, and we're hoping to, Carolyn is working on FSG for some monument signs and, oh, excuse me, not FSG, Art Scene Alliance, for getting the monument signs replaced, the tombstones, and as well as some really nice archways for the Savannah Trail. So we're expecting to spend that money this year, so. Yes, council?
Now, you did say that there were some errors in some of your presentation, because I'm looking at page one and it doesn't match with page two.
Yeah, this, these, this should be corrected, because we had to go in and make some changes, and yeah, so this is, this is correct, this is probably different than the slide you're looking at.
And then, could you, instead of just taking it from the committed funds, borrow it from the committed funds, and then as we get additional revenue in, we replenish the committed funds, because it's committed?
Borrow, so council commits funds. Could you borrow? That's an interesting, that's an interesting question. I don't, I don't know. I don't know, I'll have to look at it, because again, these are not actual, the committed fund is not like the restricted fund where there's like an account with, you know, a line item tied to that. These are just, you know, numbers that were given. Now, council action did commit those funds, so it will take council action, but that will be done when we adopt, you know, when we adopt the budget.
And this is for rebates on water conservation?
Correct.
This is not rainwater collection?
Well, it's, it was, I think it was originally, perhaps, I think originally it was intended as rainwater harvesting, but as we, as the P&amp;E committee worked, and then ultimately council adopted, we expanded it to be water conservation, because we wanted to include things like ziriscaping and things like, so.
But again, I would, if there's a way to borrow it, to show that we're going to put that money back, because it was committed, promised, for this project. So if you put that money back, if you're using it just to balance your non-committed funds.
Yeah. Well, really, I mean, what it seems is, we have no non-committed funds, the funds are all committed, but, you know.
Right.
When you add your reserve and you add your committed, and then you add your restricted, it's higher than what the total balance is, so you've got to make an adjustment somewhere. And the only thing you can really adjust is committed funds, unless you want to dip into the reserve and say, hey, part of the reserve is going to be reserved for, and you, no, count, you all can do what you will with the reserve, so.
Okay. But I'd like to find out from legal, can you consider it as though doing a loan from the committed fund to the non-committed, so that you can make, make up for the deficit?
Okay.
By calling a loan, which means you're putting money back as soon as we have extra funds.
Yeah, I think that what we could look into is the, you know, the goal would be, you know, the goal you're stating would be to have the water conservation rebate program intact at the level that it's currently at, so however we can do that as far as like paying into that as part of the budgets that we're adopting, or how we, we can do that as far as like a way of, you know, essentially borrowing the money, but that could be one of the goals that we bring back as far as the adopted budget, is making sure that that funding level, if all council agrees, that we want to fund it at that level.
Can I make a suggestion? Another way that you could fix the negative non-committed balance is to change the reserve policy from being general fund revenue to being sale, general fund sales tax, so it doesn't include that interest, and then it should balance. I could, I could look at what that would do, what that should fix it to.
Say that again.
So, so we could change, right now it's the five-year average of actual general fund revenues. Since interest revenue's kind of been up and down, and it's really, you know, driving our, driving the revenue up, you could just say sales tax, because the reserve fund is based on sales tax, right? What triggers the reserve, it's like a, it's a loss of sales tax revenue, so.
What do we say in the policy, financial policy?
We said actual general fund revenues, so we would need to go back and amend the policy to say actual sales tax revenues for the general fund.
Got it, okay.
Because remember, not the.
Not the interest.
And not include the interest, correct.
Yeah, so I think we can, we can look at that as far as how much, if that would make up the difference or not.
We can, I think that'll be good, we can have that number, we can have that number when we talk to Budget and Finance, we can kind of show it side by side, and then the committee can talk about, do we want to recommend making that policy change?
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
It's all is 26 years, Reese, but also on Finance Committee. When, when we originally did this on the original 18 months, we've definitely played with which things we counted as what we would lose, you know, even in sales tax, which things we thought really impacted that. So, and now we artificially added a million dollars, which didn't really previously go there, so I don't think that there's going to be any problem on finance going through because it's an artificial inflation, and it isn't something that we really counted on, and it's artificially high, so it was something we didn't, and so I think it'd be totally consistent with the policy to go forward in that, I wrote that, I think Kyle said it much more eloquently than I would have, but that is a good solution than having an artificial number that we have to save money for. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson?
I think it's a pretty easy number to calculate, it's still not going to get us there though, right? Because if it's 1.3 million dollars over five years, and there's other interest and stuff, but what is that going to be, $300,000? So we're still not there.
Well, it's 1.3 million dollars for just last year, and then.
But if you, if you add all the numbers and then divide them by five, that is, that is what you're trying to make up.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
We'll look at it, yeah.
All right, I'll let you, go ahead and continue.
Thanks.
All right, so this just again shows five years of fund balances historical, you can see it, we're taking quite a dip in our overall fund balance, but that is due to completing, completing projects. Again, we've, we will have spent probably over $7 million on projects, but you can see, you know, the general fund is still, has still, has still grown and is still very healthy, and a very good thing to see is where the utility fund is at right now, and that, that is a balance that we want to continue to grow as we will have a lot of infrastructure projects in a decade or so, correct, Carolyn? Yes, so. Again, our sales tax revenue through April 2025, so you can just see, this is where we, the actual revenue, this is the FY '25 budget, and this is the FY '26 proposed budget. You know, there's a lot of economic uncertainty right now, there's a lot of things going on in the macro economy, but in this draft budget, I've included a 2% increase in budgeted sales tax revenue. This is definitely something that I'm looking for council's input on, and we'll also be talking with this, about this with Budget and Finance, and the reason for that being is, I know, again, with the uncertainty, we just are having a really good year, and I think that is due to, well, obviously, as Placer showed, the increased traffic, but also our, we have high occupancy of our shopping centers. The mayor did, when we were prepping this presentation, we did have that kind of anomaly month, I mean, February, February collections, December sales are always our highest month, but we had that $200,000 of, or just under $200,000 of audit collections, and so I went ahead and, you know, calculated what it would be without that $200,000, and even without that, which again is very, you know, abnormal, we would, we are still 7% above our budget, budgeted revenue, and we're, and we're 2.6% above where we were last year. But, you know, we can, we can reduce that number if council or the Budget and Finance Committee, and then also we can always revisit that number later in July after we have additional months of sales tax revenue that could be potentially impacted by what's going on in the macro economy. So the draft budget, as it stands now, this is again, as the mayor said, an operational budget, it doesn't have any capital expenses. We have a 2% increase in budgeted sales tax and a decrease in interest revenue. We are not going to, I think we had 1.4 million in interest revenue, and I think we'll make over a million in interest, but we definitely need to decrease it, one, just because interest rates have dropped, but also because we are, you know, spending money, so there's less money in the bank, so. And with, with the operational budget now, again, no capital, we have expenses of about 8.5 million, which leaves us an overall surplus of 1.8 million. which leaves us an overall surplus of 1.8 million. So these are things to remember as you're thinking about that number and that number of expenses. That does not include utility fund transfers, both the operational subsidy and the infrastructure transfer, capital expenses, including projects or repair and replacement costs. Although there is a balance of repair and replacement, it just doesn't include any transfers to the repair and replacement balance. Any sort of salary adjustments, so we know there's going to be PD step increases, those happen annually. And then, you know, the mayor and I could propose COLA and then any sort of performance or merit-based increases. We know there's going to be some increases in employee benefits, there's going to be increases in medical. We have switched to curative, I think the employees really like it, I think it's really, really beneficial. So thank you, council, for approving that. However, just because of the market and we had a really high claim this year, I think we're going to be hit with an increase, but Jane at Higginbotham is still working on negotiating that. We're not going to have an increase of Vision, but we're probably going to have a 5% increase in dental. So an item we'll be talking about later tonight and quite a lot, I think, this summer is landscaping maintenance. And do we want to continue with contractual landscaping maintenance versus do we want to bring landscaping maintenance in-house? We'll have an agenda item later tonight, we'll be releasing the request for bids for landscaping. Right now, we're using Texas Apes and we're spending just over $200,000 a year. Just in a rough calculation, Kyle and I calculated that if we, you know, one of the proposals is to have three additional texts to bring in and do landscaping, that would be under the cost of what the current Texas Cape contract is now. So I think what we want to do is we want to release the bids, the request for bids, get the information back and then we can really do a good analysis side by side of what are the benefits to having in-house versus what are the benefits to having contractual? And then what is the, what is the cost of both? So right now, those numbers are not in the budget because Kyle and Carolyn will need to basically show, okay, this is the public works budget with a landscaping contract and this is the public works budget with the additional texts. So we'll be showing both of those to Budget and Finance. There's also the HR consultant, that's not a high expense, but I'll be bringing that back next meeting, the May 20 meeting. Again, the focus on that is the policy manual revision and the creation of SOPs. We've asked for all proposals to be under 50,000. So I'm expecting if council approves it, we'll need a budget adjustment, but to spend a little bit this fiscal year to get the project started and possibly 30,000 in FY26. And then, of course, there's the impact of tariffs or other potential price increases. So the all funds detail, so the revenue and expense, you get a surplus of 1.4 million in the general fund. You have a deficit of 393,789. So that's the utility fund and remember, there's no transfers in this draft budget. So that would mean the operational subsidy would need to be 393,000, although in speaking with Carolyn today, we will be increasing the revenue estimates based on some proposed fee increases. So that number will hopefully go down of what will be needed for the operational subsidy. And then, of course, we will want to have the $500,000, minimum $500,000 transfer for infrastructure. The street always has a surplus, $655,000. There could be transfers for projects, including, I think we have, well, we'll talk about it later, but to-be-determined mill and overlay project. The hot fund, right now it's showing a slight deficit. However, SFC requested, had a higher grant request this year because they were doing some rebranding and they did not expect the request to be that much this year, so that hopefully will not be a deficit. We have a surplus in the venue tax. We do have a problem with the crime control and we have a, you know, $83,000 projected deficit. We will need to work, Kyle and I will need to work with Chief to transfer some of those expenses, get them out of the crime control and into the general fund for public safety, just so we do not end on a deficit. But we don't also necessarily want to have a balance. We want to spend that fund, but you can't end in a deficit, so. And then, of course, the capital improvement fund is going to change as we add in projects and repair and replacement expenses. Any questions on previous slides before I move on? So, again, general, these are going to change as we have, you know, refine the budgets and get more accurate numbers, but basically here you can see, you know, the different, the expenses for the different departments. Admin, public safety, of course, that's not all of public safety, there's some in crime control. That's only a part of the public works budget. The municipal court is a very small budget and then general government, which is where the fire and emergency services lives and then anything related to events and committees and council expenses, things like that. Utility fund, here you can see the kind of the operational deficits between water, wastewater and then that large deficit in solid waste. And then our one solvent department, yay, drainage fund, so. And then the other funds, street fund, hot fund, venue and crime control. And again, we'll have to adjust the crime control so there's not a deficit. So other items in the budget, so fire and EMS, that number that's in the budget now is what is in our contract. So that will not change. We have updated software costs, we are now fully going, once we start FY26, well, with the exception of some new public works software that we've already accounted for, that we're going to be implementing this year with some leftover funds. But I've worked with the department heads to have a better distribution of the software funds amongst the departments. We have placeholders for the attorneys and the engineers. So we received two responses for the attorney RFQ, they were due today, including the Knight Law Firm, our current attorney. We received 13 responses for engineers, so Carolyn and I and Dakota will have a lot of proposals to score next week. So we'll be bringing back the engineer, a proposed, an engineering firm at the next meeting on May 20 that hopefully council will award and then we can enter into contract negotiations because we want to know fee schedules to plan for FY26. We have placeholders for committee-related programs and expenses. I don't see there being much change there. And placeholders for external grant requests, including SFC Daisy Dash, the elementary school, which also includes the P's program. And like I said, I believe SFC's request will be, they indicated it would not be as large for FY26 as it was in FY25 when they were asking for more funds for branding. And then Carolyn is going to talk about proposed increases in utility rates.
So these are the proposed increases in utility rates based on that plan we have been looking at the past couple of years. It does represent a, so there's going to be two parts of this. There is the residential utility rate increases. Base rates is about $10.60 a month and then there's a 50 cent bump in the volumetric rates that you can see in the chart on the bottom. And so these represent possible utility rates for residential customers in FY26. The next slide is going to show a, what we call the, what is a commercial industrial waste surcharge. This is a charge that we are charged each month from the city of Austin for these particular locations. And so they, Austin kind of averaged it out on what is attributed to each location and that is, would be the monthly increase for those locations for industrial waste charges. So the city gets charged $5,641.48 each month for industrial waste and those are the places that are the generators of said waste. And so that would be the monthly surcharge to those businesses. Obviously, the top three there are representing the shopping centers, which averages out across all of their customers, the charges that they do. So those would be charges that we would be proposing. This is about, I think we did, how much was it, it was like a 65?
So it'll be a $68,000 annual increase in the wastewater, which will help reduce that department's deficit. And it's money that we're having to pay to Austin every month. And so this would just be passing these fees through to the commercial areas. Questions on utility rates or should I keep going?
Let's keep going and we can catch questions.
So with all that said and done, again, remembering that this doesn't include utility fund transfers, CIP, repair and replacement transfers, landscaping costs, salary adjustment for increases in employee benefits. This is where we're projecting to end the year. So about 11.7 million in the general fund, 5 million in the utility, 5.2 in the street, about the same amount in the hot fund and a little higher in the venue fund, 1.9 million. We've got to address the deficit of the crime control and then the same balance because there's been no expenses yet posted to the capital improvement or repair and replacement fund. Just in, well, we'll talk about projects in a minute. In terms of projects, again, this is just an estimate. We still have, you know, more details to go through with the departmental budgets and with project requests. But with the changes that need to be made and the utility rate increases and utility transfers to the utility funds, we're looking at about $150,000 to do projects, a $150,000 surplus in the general fund. So that's $150,000 that could be allocated to general fund projects, not street fund or other fund projects, but general fund projects. Anything in that too is if, that number may change as well if we adjust the reserve amount. So as far as CIP projects, projects that are planned with, again, with FY26, we will be ending the five-year CIP program that we're currently in. So one is a carryover project that we're not going to quite get to this year is the Brody hazmat traps. That is also, that's a venue fund project and we would just roll, you know, carry those funds over that have already been allocated to that. The commercial AMI, so that's doing the meter replacements over in the shopping center, that's a utility fund project. And then a yet-to-be-determined Public Works Committee will look at it with Public Works and the engineers of what street to do a mill and overlay. But again, I think we try to do one at least every fiscal year. And of course, that will be street fund. And then another smaller, it's not going to be a costly project, but we will want to work with the engineers and the Public Works Committee and the community at large to develop the next five-year CIP plan. So what are the priority projects going to be for FY27 to FY31? And then as far as proposed projects, all of these were, we discussed these at the retreat and obviously we've been discussing the Uplands a lot the last couple of months with the task order for mend. So proposed projects, and this again will be based on, you know, council input and priorities. There's the 6107 Brody Trailhead, including the parking spaces, that would be a general fund project. The Uplands construction documents, so taking the schematic design, whatever the final schematic design is and moving those to construction documents, that is a general fund project as well. And then anything construction-wise from Reimagine Brody for the phase that we've kind of wanted to focus on, which is the, I always say the wrong sign, east side. The Village, the Village side, going down from 290 to Home Depot Boulevard. And that would be a street project, so. And those again are, you know, those are just projects that have been in the works and really looking again to, for council direction on what projects to proceed with. And I believe the Public Works Committee will be discussing projects at their next meeting. So.
So yeah, council, I'll hand it over to you because what I, like I said at the beginning, what I want to hear is your feedback on project prioritization, projected sales tax revenue concerns with kind of the macroeconomics and whether we want to make adjustments for that. General, you know, in terms of our process for planning CIP and those areas. So this is a discussion, you know, we're not, this is all very much a draft, you know, at this point and we're looking for your feedback so that we can carry this draft to the next iterations as we go into the planning process of Budget and Finance. So please, I'll open it up for feedback. We'll start with Mayor Verdam.
I think maybe that staff and the Finance Committee should consider projecting sales tax revenues as being flat rather than a 2% increase. And the reason I say this is, I think long-term it's impossible to project what's going to happen in the economy. But we do know what's going to happen in the short term, Rob mentioned this before, that container shipments are way down. That is probably going to cause a shortage in inventories, possibly in the July or August timeframe, which means that if that happens, inventories are short and people can't buy things that they want. Even though prices may go up, we may see below-average revenues around the September, October timeframe. And who knows what will happen after that? But that's, I don't want to say it's likely, but it's very possible. And maybe we should take that into account in our planning for revenues.
Ms. Maren Johnson?
Before the meeting tonight, I just asked advice from staff, just should I fight this? Like going ahead with the mill and overlay, I know we need to do it, I know Brody's in terrible shape just because I am kind of concerned about the budget. And Dakota, well, Carolyn's like, it's in terrible shape. And then Dakota reminded me that's like, that's what the money is for, that's in the street fund. So it's like, yeah, okay, let's do it. Y'all have been working really hard over the past couple of years. We could take our foot off the gas a little bit with some city projects and I think we can appreciate what we got. The 6107, I think we got that curb and machine, man, I think we could do it.
We're going to discuss that later.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just busting on that. But yeah, so I, whatever, I'm not good at kind of like estimating, just ask any of my clients about that. So whatever you want to do with the sales numbers. The 393,000 there, what is that, like, we've started to turn the corner on it, right? We're starting to see some of the, and like, do you know offhand what that would have been last year?
But yes, we are starting to, starting to make a dent in that.
Yeah, it's good to recognize that it's just like, just a little bit of pain makes it across the entire city, starts to make a difference in this like hemorrhage that we have. So give ourselves a little bit of break there with that, that's a good thing.
Yeah, and I think that in general, when we are having costs that we are paying for City of Austin on the, even on the commercial side, we want to try to pass those along to customers and we are paying $65,000 a year for the commercial industrial waste. And I know that hopefully that's distributed such that the, you know, the owners of those properties are doing it in such a way that it's not going to be impacting some of the smaller businesses to a large extent. But that's one I think that, you know, which has been a hole that we, it's time to address as well. And, you know, another point of feedback is just, we did make a significant increase in the residential utility rates and we are, you know, projecting incremental steps increases, but also getting council feedback on if we're concerned about the larger macroeconomics, is this an appropriate time to continue that or do we want to wait and see until we have more data? So that's another thing that I'd like to get council's feedback on as well. Ms. Maren Rosenbaum?
Personally, on the proposed CIPs, I would push the Reimagine Brody out of 2026.
And if we did work on Reimagine Brody, it would be street funds. So that's, you know, one aspect that gives us a little bit more flexibility. But I think we'd want to discuss what exactly is the scope that we'd be doing in terms of cost. So I know council, when we, at our retreat and we've had the discussions about Reimagine Brody, we did want to see some incremental progress. So if it's a street fund and we're paying for like construction documents or getting to a point where we can do work on a next five-years CIP, I would personally be in favor of that, but I also recognize that we're wanting to be cautious and conservative given, you know, potential impacts. But given that it is street funds, for me, that feels like a little bit safer, you know, just in terms of like where we have extra funding, so.
Yeah, but there was more than just the street that was involved with Reimagine Brody, that's why.
And we'll have more information, so the survey work should be complete. So we city contracted directly with a company to perform that survey work. We'll give that information then to Mend and Freeland. We'll give that information then to MEND and Freeland Turk. And their, their next steps then are to truly value engineer the project like we talked about and really focus it on the scope that, that we wanted. And then, yeah, I think the, like the mayor said, you know, we could, maybe FY twenty-six is more of, again, additional planning, construction documents, and we'll have more information. We can look at, you know, what is worth doing in that next phase of CIP of twenty-seven to thirty-one.
Councilor Medikas?
So I definitely would like to see the upland's construction project in that CIP list there. I agree with Reimagine Brody, that could push in my mind. I also want us to look at the money that we set, we said, put a million dollars aside in the water rebate program. And it's, even though we've had workshops and promoted it, we don't see a lot of use of that. So it might be overfunded at this point that we've committed almost a million dollars to that. And it's been two years ago and we've spent forty thousand dollars. So I, I think that that's something we should look at if we need to.
To the water, to the water rebates, one thing that Justin Litzfeld used to say is like, that is something that we should almost just pay for it, you know, not fifty percent, not seventy-five percent. Just if you want a water system and just blow through that because that will just be returned to us. But that, that saves us money in the long term. So the reason our household doesn't go after it is because there's, in just like the current economy, we're too afraid to spend the other half of the money. But I'm sure a lot of residents, like we said, eighty percent, ninety percent? I know it's not that, quite that easy because it has to go through all the different committees and stuff and through us. But I, I don't know, at some, we know at some point people will kind of go after it and grab that money. So I do, I do like that money. I think it is a good, I think it's worth spending money on, so.
I'm not saying it's not worth it. My point is, it's been there for a couple of years. We've increased the amount, we, I think doubled the amount of the rebate and we still don't have people taking us up on it. And that was before the, what'd you call it, Matt? The me- meta or? The macro view of what's happening with everybody and their finances. It was even before that we were pushing that. So I, I just wonder if it's, I mean, yeah, if you just paid people to do it, that's one thing. We need a lot more than nine hundred thousand dollars to do that, I think. I'm just saying, it, it's been sitting there, we've tried, we've increased it. You get the rebate from Sons of Ellie and from the City of Austin, it's a healthy rebate. Just, just saying, this is, that's all I'm saying.
Let's start with my house. And if, if it's funded at ninety-five percent, we'll see if we, we go after that.
I'll go back to Mayor Perdant and then Councilman Rosengard.
I, I think in, in what you say, Rob, about paying people for it, you've got to take fairness into account, right? You've got to think about what's fair if you're going to raise the amount you give to people, right? Are you going to, are you going to advantage the people who get there first? And then everybody else who, who doesn't is, you know, out of luck. So I think that's a hard thing to do. And if, I think it's like solar ten years ago, that people just aren't ready for it yet. They don't see the benefit yet, especially right now. I, I kind of support you on that. It's something we might want to come back to at some point, but right now the money's just sitting there.
Councilor Rosengard?
Just like everything, planning is important. So for anyone who wants to do rain barrel collection, that they need time to plan everything else that affects it. In order to do rain barrel collection, your gutters change, your landscaping changes. So there's different things that you have to plan before you can get to that stage of going ahead and doing the big rain barrel collection or water collection. And where to place it and in the meadows, we're in an HOA. How does it look, waiting for better designs to where it blends in with landscaping? Things like that are all being considered.
I, just my kind of brief experience is, I think we, we have an overhealthy fund, but I also think that we're going to, there's, there's probably going to be more uptake of this as, to echo what Councilman Rosengard said, like when we were doing our conversion, it was a six-month project, right? You know, and, and it's, it is a long planning process because you're, you have to wait for the seasonal, you know, aspects of it, you know, when you want to do the plantings, you want to, you know, there's sometimes construction, things like that. But I also think that one thing that we learned is that these companies, that landscape companies, don't know about these rebates, but they're starting to know about them. And so they can use that as a, a going back to our residents to say, did you know about this, right? Another way of reaching out to residents that, you know, potentially we can't get to because they don't attend, you know, the, these things. I, I think we need to look at that balance and, and look to see what is the appropriate amount. But I also don't want to discourage people from participating and taking advantage of it. And if we need to, you know, relook at the, the levels of, of funding. I, you know, I, I think it is one of those things that those are big projects and just tackling them, you know, is, you know, that's a lot of upfront money and you're going to get the rebate on the backend. But at the same time, you know, I think it's, we, we still want to have funding for that because it does save the city, saves the, the general environment. So I, I think that it's underutilized, but I think I could forecast that it's going to be more utilized. But again, I want to look at the balance and what is appropriate, so. Councilor Johnson?
I, I kind of do like what you said about you will just know when it's time. You know, like I can sit here and just say, but with, with solar panels, we, I, I wanted them and they kind of just sit up there, print money for me, you know. They, they paid themselves off within just a couple of years. So I already wanted to do that, but it, the, and we, we've actually like lowered our rebates for those, right, for the solar panels, just because like economically didn't make much sense.
I think there's, there's still three thousand dollars if I remember correctly.
Well, maybe, maybe it was Austin lowered theirs or we were planning.
Austin, I think, has lowered theirs.
Because it's just, it makes too much sense to do it, that it's just like, you know. But, um, yeah, I guess there will, at some point, maybe I'll look at that graph of where our, where we keep on charging more and more for our water and I'll say, okay, this is, this is the break-even point. But for, for us, it, it's just one of these things where it's like, I just don't know. I, I remember sitting next to Wanda and just saying like, the, the water in the middle of the summer sits in those rain barrels? Just because I'm like, when do I, when do I use it? She's like, just use it, man. Just like whatever. Like if you're going to like water the plants anyway, just use the, and, and I'm just like paralyzed with just like how to actually use the water that I've captured. But also about taking a loan from that, we can just agree to put the money back if we all kind of like pinky swear that, if we need to like kind of balance everything and just say, hey, when we got money, let's put it back in there, so.
Councilor Rosengard?
I would love to do it. It's just I've got a couple of other projects before this could happen. So I've got a first, you know, and I'm paralyzed on some of those decisions. First have to deal with some other big expenditures. And then from there, I would love to go to the next step, but it just takes time. But I think that once we break ground in the HOA with one person starting, then the others will see it, just like metal roofs. I didn't know that we could get metal roofs, roofs approved through the HOA. I just got done doing mine and then all of a sudden I saw a metal roof and I'm going, ooh! And then all of a sudden it took off. There were others doing it and it's, it's just that first one getting started.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious, like, I know that I've seen several projects going on in the villas. Have, have those residents approached the city and been, are they aware of the? Or maybe not, maybe not doing it appropriately, I don't know.
No, so, some of them have approached the city and we're working on rebates. And at least one of them, the city has approached the resident and said, hey, we have a rebate for this.
Okay, that's great. Yeah. We'll get further council discussion before opening up for public comments, but.
So wait a minute, we, we, the city saw someone doing something and then you just, we like just delivered the money.
Well, not, not yet. We said, hey, you should look into this rebate and apply for this rebate.
I think that's great, though. I, I think that is totally great.
Especially if, if they're doing it in a way that could be implemented in a way that's, that aligns with the rebate programs and they can adjust that at a time. I think that's, that's kind of the key thing is right, you know, they, they're saying, okay, if you consider this, then it would qualify for the rebate, so.
I just, Kyle, thank you for calculating some numbers. But basically, he refigured the general fund reserve calculations based again on sales tax revenue instead of total. And it would make the reserve just seven point, about seven point nine seven million, which would then bring that non-committed number up to one point three five million. So that could be a solution. And especially if, you know, we could present it that way when we do the presentation next week to Budget and Finance and then talk about the policy after the presentation. And also, you know, we could also consider to reducing the sales, you know, the sales tax revenue or rather keeping it flat. But we'll have the, we'll have both those discussions with, with the Budget and Finance Committee. But that would solve the problem of the committed funds and also give us just a little bit more flexibility in the, the general fund to account for potential, you know, decrease in revenue or increase in expenses.
Councilor Rosengard?
So is there a way where we could only take from the reserve what we need to make the non-committed solvable and keep the rest in the reserve? Because the minute you go back to seven point nine million and then our reserves aren't as healthy in the future, we have to think about our expenses and cut expenses. That's where I'm going with this.
Okay, so, I mean the.
How much, how, I guess, bottom line, what I would want to know is how much do we need as far as every single month to pay our expenses? When we're at the nine point seven three.
I mean, do you want to, here's the question, do you want to base the reserve calculations based on expenses or do you want to base it on revenues? So, revenue, right. It still is close because I just did a calculation, like what is our, again, our general fund, you know, expenses, operating expenses are, you know, five point four seven million dollars and you multiply that by one point five and it's about eight point two million. So the reserve is slightly lower. But again, we want to base our, I think we've decided we want to base the reserves off of revenue versus expenses. And we also know if we do hit hard times, there will, there will be cuts that we make in the, in the general fund, you know, discretionary versus essential expenses, so.
Because as it is right now with the reserves, it says that we spend five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars a month on running the city, if you take that divided by eighteen. Anyway, thank you.
Councilor Johnson?
You said we've decided that we base it on revenue.
Correct.
And we always run in the black, so that, just right there, you have like, like a little cushion, you know.
Yeah, cushion, correct, correct. And that's, that's something that the, the Budget and Finance Committee talked about. Because again, the, the reserve policy was like two sentences, right? It, you know, it just kind of set the reserve. It didn't talk about when to use the reserves and what to spend them on. Again, the reserve is twofold. It's a, it's a rainy day fund, it's an emergency fund that can never, according to the policy, go below that, that twelve months, a hundred percent of, of revenues. And then that extra cushion is a savings account. It's for savings for, you know, like the city did years ago and saving to, to build the new, the new city, you know, the new city facilities.
It, it sounds like there's multiple buffers in that because it's, it's based on revenue and not expenses. So it's like, you know, eighteen months of expenditures, but we're basing it on revenue, so there's like that cushion.
Yeah.
And then there's also, that also assumes that we're not making any cuts, right?
Well, and it talks about that as well in the policy that, you know, before reserves are used, especially those emergency reserves, you know, council needs, council and staff need to look at the budget and see what are, you know, our discretionary expenses, you know, and versus essential services.
All, all of which like I'm totally happy with. It's just kind of like your 401K, you just put the money away, you don't even think about it. Then one day it tanks ten percent magically.
And, and that's what the reserve does as well, is it keeps the, the balance high and just like the street fund and we earn interest on it, which is great.
All right, well, let's go and open it up for public comments and we'll continue our discussion afterwards.
Thank you, Mayor Melissa Gonzalez, twenty-six Reese. I have actively been trying to do rainwater collection. And I'd sort of put it on the back burner because it was, and I went and it was going to be twenty thousand dollars. And I went, do I really want to throw ten thousand at this? And then you guys, just in February, did the upping of it, I think to seventy-five percent? Is that what we switched to? Is that correct? Yeah, yeah. And so then it became more interesting to me. But to do that, you can't just go do the rainwater. I have to go, because they're going to put it pretty far back of my property. So, so first I have to do the drainage work before I can even do that. I have to get the people out there to do this. So I've, I've got one bid, but you don't want just one bid, you want three, and you've got to get those people out to your house. So there's, so, and then you have to decide if you're ever going to put an ADU there, will that go in? So if you want to do that, then you also get your ADU plan in there. So to, to do that, and I'm a person who's actively wanting to do it as of when you did it in February, when you just did that. But it's still taking, you know, I just today called David Miller to come out and give me another bid about the irrigation. But it's, you know, to get your three bids at this time of year is not a small thing. And then, and then, and then so many things are contingent on what you're going to do, especially when you're burying your, your irrigation. You have to make sure nothing else is going to go on top of that or you already have your stuff on, on top of that where you're going to go. I mean, it, it all, so it's this big house of cards. So I think when people are saying, we just, we just upped it and no one's doing anything, they might be doing something, but it takes a long time to get all those stacks in a row. So I really think that if, and we haven't really gotten the word out yet. We, we just did it where it went up to seventy, seventy-five. And, and so that's a big difference. And so I'm just really hesitant because I'll tell you as a person who's trying to do it, that it's taken some time. And so, so I just think we have to be a little bit more patient. And as Councilmember Rosengard has said, once one person starts doing it, then you start seeing this, this tumble. But, but it, it takes a while to start seeing people do it. I mean, and, and you see that in neighborhoods with metal roofs. I mean, Reese's got all metal roofs now. You see a lot of, or you see a lot more than you did. And, and so I think that those are really important things to, to do. But I'm, I'm telling you that I'm actively doing it and I'm telling you how long it's taking me to do it. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson?
I, I think, I think metal roofs should be included in the, because I don't think you can, well, I'm just saying, because I don't think we're supposed to drink the water off of our tar roof. So I think that's something that should be considered. But on the other side of it, that, that number, I also don't think came from a lot of scientific research. Wanted to just like throw it out there at the last second. She was like, million bucks? And we're like, okay, cool. That was like the end of the thinking on it. So it's, it was a good round number, but I don't think we should, you know, beat ourselves up if we don't completely stick to it. And I was sitting right here and she was right there. She just goes, million bucks?
Mayor Perdant?
If, if we decide to reduce that amount right now, we can always add more back in later if people actually start to use it. But I'd like to see people actually start to actively start drawing from that money rather than keeping almost a million dollars committed there. I'm not saying I don't want it to go away completely, but we could reduce it by a third or even a half.
Other thoughts, council, as we get ready for budgets? Councilor Johnson?
I meant to mention this during the public safety kind of review there. I've seen a lot of police, and I'll bring this back around to the budget. I've been seeing a lot of police cars from different, what are they called, jurisdictions, sorry, doing training at the EOC, right? I, I've seen an uptick in them over the last like month or so. And I don't know if it's just like training season or whatever. But one of the benefits is we put that EOC in there and it's a great meeting place. And then, not even so much revenue, but just like cut expenditures because we get the free training, right? Okay, maybe it has, maybe it hasn't, but at least it spends a little bit less. This may be kind of too speculative, but I, I think that a pavilion at the uplands, like if that is something that is like rentable, you know, we have this and maybe not that many people take us up on it. But a, do they? Do we, do we make any money?
City Hall is utilized very frequently. I don't know about.
We don't make much money. This is not a, this is not a profitable venue that we're, that we're running.
Yeah, I think it's more for committees and residents and some people rent it, but there's always something going on here.
Yeah, you can generate revenue for things.
Yeah, I think a pavilion.
If we truly make some, you know, good. If we truly make some, you know, good rates.
Yeah.
We have really low rates for running, running this building, so.
And we, and this is just like future revenue ideas. Round, well, Round Rock Energy or whatever they were called, or no, Enchanted Rock, when they came in to talk to us about like those mini power stations, do you like that idea? The, the mini power stations that like Buc-E's has and HEB has? But they were saying that, oh, you know, you team up with some investment group and they put in the rest of the money. And I'm like, we got money. And those things, those things make bank and all you just need is like a little bit of space to like put them. So in the future, and then grid depend, independence also. So we got to talk.
Can we, can we start renting out our parking lot like ASC does? Just sell anything, yeah.
We have some direction. I'm sure as Mayor Proton mentioned, we'll, we'll discuss with the budget and finance committee. Hopefully we'll have by the end of the week and when we go to budget and finance next week, we'll have the May collections. So that's, you know, March, March sales. But we'll discuss, you know, where we want to go with sales tax. But I think we are going to go ahead and present, are we going to present it with the updated? Kyle, are we planning to, to present with the updated, I think from the direction from council and-
We'll, we'll meet tomorrow and we can-
And we can discuss if we want to show both to the committee or, you know, choose one. Because it makes a huge difference whether we base it on total general fund revenue or whether you base it on just sales tax. So we'll discuss that further. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for your feedback, council. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. First, I, I like the, the idea of and would encourage finance committee to consider the, the change in the basis for the reserves. I think that's certainly something worth talking about. And I guess as far as the macroeconomic situation is concerned, I, I don't, I don't, I may have a little more, maybe a bit more rosy outlook on that because I, if there's, one, we can certainly look and say if, if there's going to be shortages and things are not going to be on the shelf, that that could have an impact. But if you look at it from the perspective of a family or an individual has, has a certain amount of money to spend, as long as they spend it regardless of how much they get for that money or how it's spent, whether it's spent on something that's not going to be on the shelf or not. If it's not on the shelf, well, maybe they go to what's on the next shelf and buy it. As long as they have, from, from the city perspective, as long as they have the same amount of money they want to spend and they spend that money, that's going to generate the same tax revenue for us. So as long as we're the city collecting revenues, I think that, that that may not be as big a hit. However, when the city becomes the customer, we want to buy something, that's where the hit's going to come is our expenses are going to go. I, I guess I send, tend to, I'd be more con, I guess I'd be more concerned maybe about the expense side of the budget than the revenue side of the budget for that reason. But obviously, I think it's absolutely well taken that, that the, the, the degree of uncertainty is certainly much higher in terms of what it's, you know, how, you know, what, what, what the span is going to be or potentially could be. So I think that's something we, I, I'm more concerned about the volatility of, of the income and the, and the expense side.
Thank you for that. That's, that's something we could consider and also talk about with budget and finance. We do have a, it's, it lives in the general government department, but we have a contingency fund, but we may want to look at having departmental contingency funds. I think we did that a couple of years ago when we were dealing with inflation and just have that line item there where if, if some, you know, something that we're planning on buying or, you know, that's with city operations, that's just, it's just costing more, we have that contingency fund to dip into. So good, good thinking on that. Thank you, council member.
All right. Well, thanks for your feedback and we'll go to our last agenda item, which is agenda item number nine, Consider an Act on Authorizing the Release of a Request for Bids for Landscaping Maintenance. And we'll hand it over to the Public Works for discussion of this item.
So yes, our landscaping contract with Texas Caves will end in September. And as we go through the budget process, we'll be looking at either, you know, a new landscaping contract or we will be discussing the option of bringing landscaping services in-house. So currently that contract includes the mowing and maintenance of a vast network of city-owned properties and rite of ways. This next year, we would be adding in Savannah Trail and parts of the city hall backyard as part of the grounds maintenance contract. That current contract does include mowing of the residential rite of ways. And we discussed this at the Planning and Environmental Committee a few weeks ago and they had motioned to remove the residential rite of ways out of the RFP. And there's a RFP and there's a few reasons for this. First of all, mowing of residential rite of ways is something that's generally not done throughout any city ever. Even our, the city's own code puts that responsibility on the property owner. If you look at 93.05, it says that that area between the curb line to the property line is the responsibility of the property owner. You would think of rite of ways really like a super easement is what it is. It's still owned by that individual in, in that way. So the, the other thing is there are a lot of residents out there who have contractors or mow those areas themselves. When we mentioned that, hey, yeah, we mow this, I know at least one person on Planning Environmental was like, what? Yeah. And so, so that is something that we are, have removed from this. And so the thought is that could offset some of the cost for Savannah Trail and City Hall Backyard. We also included a request for, just included in there the cost for some of the maintenance of the granite trails. That's something we may or may not include and when we finally award the bid and just to get that cost for how much it costs to maintain those trails. And then the other thing that was removed in there is that currently the city mows down Westgate Boulevard from the corner there at Jones Road, basically to the creek. And that is all Austin Rite of Way right there. And so that was also taken out of, of the, the bid here. So the plan would be then that we would send this out for RFPs, get the proposal, see what the cost is for these services. We would also be presenting the alternatives and look at a cost benefit of having, having a contractor who is focused on these landscaped areas versus in-house staff that may have a little bit more flexibility to address other things. So currently what, if, if say we had something else happen somewhere that we needed to address, we can't redirect Texas Cape to do any other work than what they are hired to do. And so these are things that we will be considering. We will release the RFB, ask for the bids and discuss all of these changes with Planning and Environmental. And of course, we would be discussing it with Budget and Finance too as part of the budget process. And that would be coming back to council consideration later this summer. So if there are any questions on the RFB or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer those.
Councilor Johnson, then Councilmember Rosengard.
So mowing of the rite of ways, transferring that, a great idea. I think everyone, well, I won't say that. I, I think most people think that makes a lot of sense. And they're always like, they always end up being different heights too.
Yeah.
The winter projects, I think alone might be like one of my favorite things about it because we get it, they have like kind of like a cookie cutter that they work through. I remember the last time we did this, not my problem, but my worry with just going with Texas Caves was our, how, how well they pay. I know what our fiscal responsibility is up here, but I also see those jobs as kind of like people that are supporting a family, being part of a household and stuff like that. And you pointed out that they actually had higher starting pay than we did. So-
At that time, yeah.
Coming back the other direction, how are we doing on that?
No, I think we're doing much better now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what did you say that last sentence?
Well, Texas Caves, at the time of the last contract, actually had higher starting salaries than us. So, but I was just wondering if we're going to be bringing the overall kind of status of the middle class down by bringing it in-house.
Councilor Rosengard.
The reason it started with mowing the rite of ways in the city was simply because there are some properties that have very steep ditches. So it was never supposed to be every property getting mowed. We mow our own property. We weed or wet, weed whack our own property. A lot of residents in the HOA neighborhoods pay landscapers to do it, et cetera. It's the concern of an injury of someone who mows their own property that has a very steep ditch. I do not like when, when Texas Landscape mows my property because they actually have caused me erosion issues now. They mow too close to the ground. They have pulled a lot of the, I can't call it grass anymore, weeds out of the hole on the ditch.
Right.
Where it's bare now. And I've tried to seed it and so on. Anyway, so I don't even like when they mow our property. And the same with some of the other properties. Tom Munner, you know, Tom Munner has a, a steep ditch. He's got-
Very steep ditch.
-erosion issues constantly. And I believe it's because they're mowing too close to the ground.
And, and that's a thing we're going to be discussing with definitely some of those residents in the meadows. Not just regarding mowing, but also the steepness of the ditches. That is something we will probably be discussing with them. I, I've actually met with Tom and I need to, you know, give him a call and we are going to be meaning to discuss on that. So there's probably two homes in the meadows that do have those super steep ditches that right across the street from each other. But the other ones are, are very mowable for the most part. So, so yeah.
Yes. I've mowed ours, no problem. So what I'm considering on this landscaping bid is what if we did mulching once a year versus twice a year? What if we did fertilizing in-house and not the mowing in-house? What can we do and look at the contract that we could handle in-house without, number one, increasing staff, causing any injury or danger or additional landscape supplies needed other than fertilizing if we took on fertilizing? So we wouldn't have to buy more mowers, more weed whackers and so on. Simply what part of this contract could we do in-house that would-
Without adding more staff?
Without adding more staff.
We're not going to be able to probably do any, any of the contract that is currently covered by Texas Caves without adding more staff?
Okay.
Because what we're looking at is if we did, basically we'd be adding more staff in place of the Texas Cape contract. And we aren't asking, besides maybe some weed eaters, we wouldn't be asking for any additional equipment either, either way.
If you take it in-house, you definitely need more equipment.
We would, I, yeah, I discussed this with Sam. We'd probably be looking-
Because you've got maintenance, you've got breakdown.
We would probably be looking at some weed eaters because weed eaters don't last as long as other things.
Correct.
But it would mostly be weed eaters. We wouldn't be asking for any more trucks, any more mowers. We've got mowers and things like that to work with.
So keep that in mind when you come back with a bid of showing us what it would cost in-house versus hiring outside, even though they pay them higher than our starting wage, we don't have to deal with extra equipment, maintenance, repair, none of that.
Right.
We don't have to worry about additional benefits. All of that adds up.
Yeah, we would be including that in our cost benefit analysis for the in-house versus the contract.
And like I mentioned before, maybe mulch once a year instead of twice a year. That's all I do on my property is once a year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Medicas.
So one thing, when you bring it back and we're looking at comparison, one of the things that comes up in P and E all the time is the, the lack of our ability to have Texas Caves do other things that relate to fire and cleaning up trails and things of that nature that aren't part of their contract. So it would be good to look at the thing, those list of things that we would be able to do with in-house staff that we can't do with a contractor.
Right.
So I think that's, that was, has been a big concern in P and E.
I think it just in general, we're, so the, we're going to be getting a bid back hopefully from multiple-
Yes.
Multiple groups and being able to use that as our, one of our cost comparisons. Is there anything in the, the RFP that we want to remove that we currently have in there based on, you know, things that we, we, I, I know we're paring down, like the rite of way we're paring down as aspects, but are like kind of these seasonal changes, something that we, we want to drop before we actually release the RFP? Or make it more modular, right? You know, where we have some ability to say, okay, we're not, obviously we're not, the granite trails is one that's modular because we-
Yes.
It's going to be like a plus on. But are there other things that we could make a little bit more modular so that to Councilor Rosengard's point, maybe there's a, a certain portion that Texas Caves or a company like them could continue to do, but we would take on with finish the additional staffs and the other things that, that we wouldn't, that have a more direct cost comparison benefit to us.
So looking at it, I mean, there, there's very little. I mean, I think I would say that we could do modularly. I mean, everything is always, if you look at how it's bid out, every area has their own like bid, basically. But, I mean, we could change it to once a year. I think they pretty much only, they do mostly fall mulching and then maybe just touch up in the spring. It's not a huge, it's not a huge endeavor for them to mulch. And oddly enough, that's part of the landscape bed maintenance. And outside of this property here, it's not, it's not, they're not usually huge numbers for that. So I don't think you're going to do a lot of cost savings by taking it down to just once a year on that. But otherwise, yeah, fertilizing is just a kind of an annual thing. Everything's kind of an annual thing that I don't know if we can do that. I mean, and we can definitely ask, you know, if we did mulch once a year versus twice a year, if there would be, how much cost savings that would be. We also have a lot of things in here that are requiring, I mean, our first option is always manual removal, which generally costs more than just somebody to go spray chemicals. But then, then you have chemicals that are being spread and generally it's going to be roundup because that's the only thing that's still effective. And roundup is not, not, not great. Nobody wants that. So, yeah, I'm not sure there's a lot we can take out here.
Yeah. And, and I think the discussion about whether we're moving forward with contract services or staff, that's going to be brought back. That's going to be something that we need some more, a lot more analysis on. But we, we first need to have bids so that we can, you know, see what the cost is going to be. And this is a three-year contract, is that right?
Yeah, it's usually a three-year contract.
And we'll have, you know, be able to project out over that three years, the, the cost for the contract plus, you know, compare that against other ways to, to do that in-house. Councilor Rosengard.
The other part I forgot about is a lot of the contract says that they should manually remove the weeds versus using herbicide. Herbicide is to be used last. And I'm thinking, oh my God, there's your labor cost right there.
Mm-hmm.
That's expensive to manually, I know.
Yeah.
I know how long I sit out there and weed my mulch beds and so on.
I mean, everything is generally in a pretty good shape. So it's, you know, and they're, they're out here frequently. So it's, you know, because I, I do the same thing. I manually remove things at my house and if I leave it for a month, it's, it's bad and it's hard.
Exactly.
But generally they, they, it's, they keep it in pretty good shape. So it's not that hard. But we, we, the city has always had basically like chemicals as a last resort, basically is what it is. And, and, and so basically the contractors have to kind of, we have discussions on that, on where like, they're like, hey, we can't, we can't do this for this one. We're going to have to do some kind of chemical to do this and to break it down. So.
Councilor Medicas.
So, yeah, I was going to ask about the, the chemical because I know that was a real concern of P and E too, using roundup. But also the, it seems to always come up about how short they cut the grass and that they mow when there really isn't much grass.
Right. Because that's, they're here every week to mow something. So it is in the contract for them to mow, it's supposed to be a four inch height is the minimum. It's not supposed to be any shorter than that. So I've talked to them several times about it, it's got to be that four inch height, which for some people, that's too tall. And for some people, it, when you're not mowing, when grass is not alive, it's too short. So, so, so that's what we're talking about regarding flexibility is that when we, you know, during the summer, it, things are, there's a lot of dead stuff and we're just, we're mowing-
Dust.
We're mowing dust and weeds and, and, and maybe there's a better alternative to, to be done in those areas. And we could do, I would much rather go and, and get rid of mosquito and ash juniper and, and do more wildfire control than, than mow dead grass.
Other questions? And Mayor Proton?
I move we authorize the release of a request for proposals, RFP for landscaping maintenance.
One second. Second. Any further discussion before we vote? All of us is eager, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Council- Council, we are at our last agenda item, which is to adjourn. Councilor Medicas.
Motion to adjourn.
Say a second. Say for ten seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned at eight oh four PM. Thank you, council, thank you, staff.